Oh, I know what that is.
What is that?
Is it a diving competition?
No, I think it's in the meetings before June 30.
Oh, that's sweet.
Is that right?
Countdown.
We're just hoping to do it. We don't know what it is.
By him?
Make sure you give one to each of us next time, so that we could do it too.
Alright, sounds good. Is there, um, through the approval of the agenda?
Who's to approve the agenda, uh, superintendent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Dave?
Okay, Mr. Wilson, I understand you're here to present a form to the board?
Actually, yes.
Okay, this is fine. And as was told, there will be no discussion on this tonight. It's a personnel issue, related personnel issue, so they have to hand it out in person.
Do you want all of this now?
Yes, whatever you have to give to the board. Do you have copies for the board members?
Well, I have statements that girls have written and stuff like that. If you want to go with it.
Okay, I'll take all of that and I'll make copies for the board then.
Can I get a copy of them?
Sure. Uh, board will be given copies of this material and they'll get back to you.
Is there an approval of the minutes? Your motion?
I move approval of the minutes for the three board meetings, February 9th, 2016, February 18th, 2016, and February 23rd, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications, Dave?
Uh, donations, we had another, several nice donations. Again, Tim Neville donated a van valued at $2,500 to the LIV program. They use that van to go to the store and places that take people to work, where their students to work and things like that. Uh, Target donations, the annual donation from Target came and the amounts listed for each school are listed on your agenda. The, uh, Fox Valley Technical College Fab Lab, and, uh, Mr. Becker, do you want to just mention what that is?
Um, I was contacted by, uh, Fox Valley Tech in Appleton. They have this thing called the Fab Lab. And it's a, uh, a trailer that has all kinds of CNC routers and computers and all kinds of fancy equipment in it. The idea of this trailer is that an inventor, somebody who comes up with an idea, can take their idea all the way through design to, uh, prototype inside this trailer. And, uh, they roll the trailer around all over the place, but they, they wrote a grant with AT&T to bring their trailer to our high school and, uh, conduct their electric guitar building lab. And, um, so what the grant provides is it provides for 10 to 12 students to design their own electric guitars and, uh, use the equipment then to, to use the CNC routers and route out the body of the guitar and then learn how to solder and use electronics to put all the electronic stuff onto their guitar and, uh, and bring it to a complete design. And, uh, so I, I was just called today. They've postponed the awarding of the ceremonial check until May 6th, I believe is, is the date. But, uh, this camp will be in the summer, uh, third week of June, I believe, is when it's going to be announced. They'll roll it on, onto our campus and, uh, and it'll be a great experience for some of our students. And one, one of our teachers can volunteer to be the teacher in charge and for volunteering, they get to make their own electric guitar. So it's a pretty wide for position. At this point, I've got five people interested in that one position.
Good. And then, uh, Blinker Building Systems, Amy, is there, do you want to just talk about that a little bit? The Blinker?
What they donated?
Yes.
Um, they were generous enough to donate three of their employees to help our tech ed students put in the trim, the doors and the cabinetry on the house. And, uh, they'll be coming back next week to put in the water colors in the kitchen and both bathrooms.
Last year, you said we paid quite a bit to get that done.
$1,600 for all that last year, and this will be all donated time and talent.
Very nice. And then the last donation is Holiday Trio. We have some contests in the district for the wellness program. And a number of teachers from different buildings received cash awards for their efforts in wellness. And they got together and decided to, um, turn those cash awards over to the schools. So schools could buy wellness initiatives for their students. So that's a form of donation. So we thanked them for doing that. And it was a significant amount of money too. I don't remember how much it was. Carl, do you remember?
I actually don't remember.
But it was significant.
It was a good amount, yes. To do some good things in each of the buildings.
Good. It's a little heat motion for the... Is there a motion?
Move to approve the donations, uh, with gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you notes. Uh, Gary Weichl family, that donation was made, uh, Mr. Weichl's wife passed away. And Marie Lang family donation was made to the Scholarship Foundation, uh, her mother passed away. Under recognition, uh, last week was, week or so ago was FFA Week. Uh, Ms. Erb, I understood you wanted, you talked to us a little bit about that at the last, after the last meeting. How'd it go?
Well, it was just a wonderful week, the third week of February. And, uh, the FFA members, we have 143 FFA members at Wapaka High School and about 15 that have graduated and you can be in the FFA until you're 21 years old. And some of the degrees and honors that you can get, you have to be out of school to earn. Um, we started out, um, the week by getting our, um, FFA supplement, uh, published in the Wapaka Post and the students, uh, sell ads and write the articles to make that a reality. We had an ice cream social for all students, um, in the Agriculture Education Department. Uh, Tuesday, we had the famous Teacher Breakfast, um, which includes school board members and, and everybody that helps the FFA, uh, throughout the year. On Wednesday and Thursday, we had petting zoo, animal education displays in the headhouse and animal lab, um, pre-K through, um, second grade. And, uh, that used to be just a one-day event and now it's a two-day, and that is a great time. On Friday, we had Egg Olympics where the entire student body was excused to the gymnasium for the last hour and 20 minutes. And, um, we had participation from the, uh, teachers, uh, anywhere in, you know, seniors down to the freshmen. Um, we had 12 events and they were all successful. And, uh, like I, I said at the cabinet meeting, I give a shout out to, uh, Mr. Feltsch who got three pies shoved in his face. Um, the, the, the... That we did a, we did a, uh, food drive for the Wapaka Food Pantry. And we had the drive split into faculty member and then a freshman, sophomore, junior and senior. And the person that brought in the most food from each of those divisions got a pie. And they all walked around, all the teachers, and they all just gave it to Mr. Feltsch. So it took us like three towels to get him cleaned up. So, uh, that, that was a good time and, uh, you know, of course, the FFA, um, really appreciates support from the school board, the teachers and administrators to make that happen.
It's the Breakfast Week, uh, March 7th through 11th. Our breakfast program continues to go strong. And then Logan Jampson, they're qualified for state level competition of the National Geographic feat. Congratulations to Logan. Reports on meetings attended. I, I know Mr. Farr attended the, um, Legal and Human Resources Meeting in Wisconsin Dells. And, uh, he would like to report on that, but he'll hold his report until next month. Were there any others? I don't think so.
Hi, just one thing. I went to the academic banquet along with Connie and students and it, and it was very nice. The speaker was phenomenal. So I just wanted to make that compliment.
Great. We'll get to school visits later on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, just for the rest of, um, upcoming meetings and other activities, Tuesday, March 15th, that's a week from tonight, is the Instructional Committee Meeting. Talk about the chain school and grades three and four. April 5th is the school board election. April 6th and 12th are the election canvas. And then regular board meeting next one, April 12th, uh, this room, 5:45 PM.
Not on your, uh, is the LIV open house, like, will be coming up?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, right? Yeah, the LIV, LIV program has open house, 3:30 to 5:30 tomorrow. Thank you. Encourage you to stop by and, you know, say aye, visit the classroom. What time is that? 3:30 to 5:30. Committee meetings, Sandy?
For the Personnel Committee, it's just been a busy month for, busy two months for committee meetings and board meetings. Um, we have two that were closed session, um, Personnel Committee meetings, the first on February 11th to hold the final of our initial candidate interviews and then to review the slate of interviewees and prepare a slate of finalists for the board, um, to interview. And then on March 1st, um, having had several board meetings and selecting a final candidate in Mr. Greg Neen, on March 1st, the Personnel Committee met, having been given the authority to draft a, um, contract proposal. And, and, uh, and to draft the parameters of an offer to be made to Mr. Neen. And so that's what we did at this meeting. So I'll pause here to just, um, move on behalf of the committee approval of the two sets of minutes that were in the board materials, and then I'll continue with my report.
That doesn't need a second to, as a committee recommendation. Okay, just a moment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, um, that having been said, we're in the process of working with the attorney to draft the formal documents, the, the contract and the, the master agreement that would be given to Mr. Neen. It's proceeding a little bit more slowly than we had anticipated, um, in part, or mostly because we want to make sure that we're compliant with the Affordable Care Act as we're creating these documents. And Mr. Neen is aware of this process. Uh, Dr. Peschel sent him the broad parameters of the offer that we're working on. He understands the reason it's taking a little bit longer and, uh, he and Dr. Peschel have been in correspondence. So as soon as the documents are finalized with our attorney, then we'd anticipate sending them to Mr. Neen and then planning a meeting with the Personnel Committee. So that if there are questions or, um, discussion that is needed, that we'd be able to do that. And at some, some point after that meeting or other meetings, the Personnel Committee would be bringing a contract forward to the board in open session for, um, approval.
Can we see a copy of the contract? I assume you'll send it out to Greg before?
Before we get together?
Is it possible for us to get that too?
Same time I send it to him, I'll copy everybody.
Okay, yeah.
Has counsel given us a target date?
Um, I actually had communication with them today and, um, issue relates to health insurance. And we're trying to, I'm not sure the board can do what they want to do. He gave me some direction and I emailed back and said, I don't think that's right. So he's taking it back to the ACA team and he'll get back to me. He knows it's urgent and we should have a resolution tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
It's the end of my report.
Health Insurance Committee, uh, Carl Hayek was going to report on that meeting.
Okay. Um, most of you know that our health insurance has dropped, uh, by 28% in the last five years. Uh, but we knew we had a high loss ratio this year and that it would be a challenging year for us to, uh, maintain that continual loss. So we brought together the Health Insurance Committee and we wanted to explain more so rather than get into the dynamics of, uh, percentages and so on. We wanted to get into, talk about, uh, the future of health insurance. And we talked, uh, about private exchanges and we talked about baseline parameters, having a baseline set amount the district pays for health insurance as you move forward to get a, to, uh, stay in compliance with the Cadillac Plan, which continually rises. And in 2017 or so, we approached more so that $20,000 threshold, which would get us into that Cadillac thing. So how, how can we manage our health insurance forward and be compliant and, uh, give the employees more ownership on that? And as the Health Insurance Committee, uh, talked and discussed this, we, we will have more and more informational meetings with the staff to get them on board and take, uh, to have ownership, uh, with this as we transcend, uh, so, the so-called consciousness moving forward. Um, but one of the things we do know though now, we, it came in today, that we knew we were going to have a tough negotiation with, uh, WEA. Um, but, uh, today as M3 has working, been working behind the scenes and we were, we're ready to go to proposal to bid insurance out if it exceeded, uh, uh, multiple amounts. We thought at one point it would be almost a 15% increase. Uh, as it came in today or, uh, earlier, uh, yesterday, that, uh, WA, uh, M3 did an analysis and they said that we would literally deserve an 8.4% increase. Uh, WA came back to the table and they said, uh, we'll give you a 5.6% increase. Then, as we tweaked the design a little bit, uh, with M3, uh, there's Alternative 1 and Alternative 2 that, uh, changing the coal pays slightly and, uh, emergency care slightly, we can get that ratio down to a 2.4%. And if we work a little further, which would be, uh, raising the deductible slightly, we can get a 0% increase. So we know that we're, uh, we're, uh, we'll have conversations, Dr. Peschel and I, with M3 tomorrow morning. And we'll put together the Health Insurance Committee again and, uh, move forward. But it looks like we're in a better picture than we anticipated. Um, uh, some, some of it to do with their believing in us with our wellness. And, uh, they've had us for a long term, so it appears that we're, we may not have to go out to bid. So that's my report.
I don't know if they cap the shock losses a little bit and that is also part of it, or do they not really disclose that? Did they cap any of the shock losses, the two larger losses, or did they not really go into detail on that?
They didn't go into detail at this point, but they, there's a threshold that they would take out to the highest losses when they do that rate. So, um, so that's part of the question, sure.
We've got a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning. We'll find out a little bit more about that. But bottom line, we're going to bring the Insurance Committee together once again, explain this information. And then we'll talk about where we go from here. When will that be? We haven't set a date yet. Where are we going?
We should hold up those fours again.
Are you going anywhere? I'm not going anyplace. Okay. We'll schedule that. Uh, we'll get on that tomorrow after our meeting with M3 and come up with a date. Uh, Resolution 042715-5 designating legal counsel. I explained this to the board previously, but we need to take action, make a motion to, uh, discontinue our relationship with Davidson Killfoul and designate Von Brison and Roper as our legal counsel effective February 23rd, 2016.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody knows why?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you. School bid. School bid.
Well, I did. Um, I visited the high school and, um, I actually went early in the morning, which is unusual. But I did.
It's about 11 o'clock.
No, eight. And, um, there were several classes that weren't meeting at that time because of whatever. They have prep time for the teachers, so. Um, I went into a few classrooms that were empty and there were no students. Um, but I spent a lot of time over, um, I went to the live classrooms actually and spent a good amount of time there with them. Um, the students were having a lesson in cooking and how to, um, do some of the simple tasks involved in cooking and preparing, um, macaroni and cheese and, and simple kind of meals. And so, um, it was very enlightening. There had been a medical emergency that morning. And so, um, it was interesting to see how the school was all told to remain in their classrooms until the medical emergency was dealt with. And, um, so it was, uh, interesting to see that all pan out and how effective it was and, um, all low-key and it all went well. Um, then I, uh, went on down to, uh, the cooking hallway or, uh, the, what do we call it?
Face.
Face hallway and, um, spent some time with, um, Mrs. Schwalmberg and she was talking a lot about the culinary classes that they're doing and how they're expanding on that and how every year they have at least five or six students from Wapaka that go on to culinary school based on the experience that they've had, um, with those classes. So it's, it's really been, um, a very successful program and actually becoming more and more successful as more males are getting into the cooking program. And it's kind of a cool chef thing, so. And then, um, Mrs. Gutsky, I spent a lot of time with her and she was telling me about, uh, the grant that they've received from Fox Valley Tech and then also in conjunction with Oshkosh, um, for the CNA training that is available at our high school, um, in conjunction with those other schools. And how our students are, um, enrolling in a CNA program. They go on Saturdays. And, um, the school is doing, our high school is doing what they can to help the young people study for the tests and prepare themselves, because it's a very stringent, um, testing program. And it's not an easy thing to get a CNA license. And she said there's such a demand for it right now that a lot of the students get five to six job offers even before they graduate. Because there's such a demand. And now anybody going to, into nursing school is required to have a CNA license. So it's becoming more and more popular. So to do that, Mrs. Gutsky, there was a hospital bed and there was all sorts of equipment needed to set up a fake hospital room so that the young people can practical, practice all the practical skills that are involved. Because they're tested not only on the knowledge, um, the biological knowledge, but they're also tested on the practical, um, aspects of caring for a patient. So she's taken it upon herself to just kind of create the pseudo-hospital room. It's a work in progress right now. And how to change sheets and, you know, move a patient and whatever. And impressively, she went through the program herself last summer. So that she would be able to help the young people prepare for this program at her own cost. So, um, it was really eye-opening to see that that's kind of a whole new direction that, um, that program is taking in our high school, which is noteworthy. So it was a great visit. As was the breakfast.
Which came first?
Well, the breakfast. I, I just had lockers. But it was really good. And actually, I got to sit down with the kids then and prepare the meal. And they were exhausted after the rush of people. And they, we talked a lot about how they gathered the recipes and how they debited the jobs and the responsibility and what time they had to get there and the cleanup and whatever, so. They had a real appreciation for their mothers.
Good. Anyone else?
I didn't, other than going to the breakfast and the academic banquet and both were very nice. The food was nice. And, you know, the FFA room is just incredible. There's like 12 things going on simultaneously in that room. And Betty and I came back to get Betty and she was talking to some kids and there were kids taking tests and there were kids with their arms in some big vat of water or, I don't know what was going on in there, but it's just all very entertaining. They're all learning, not sure what, but there's a lot of stuff going on in there.
Can I make a report on a visit I didn't make but would have liked to?
Uh, this is a first.
Well, Betty has, um, been, been asked to judge a, uh, Dr. Zoom's costume contest last Friday, but wasn't able to attend. So I volunteered, but turned out to be sick Friday morning. But, and I was so disappointed because I had studied to do this. It had been a long time since I had met any Dr. Zooms question. But Ms. Alinsky, who had, had invited one of us to take your place, not, not really, but be the, the person, um, sent me a video so I could prep, sent me a rubric for judging the costumes. And, um, so there were specific things the judges were to look for. I think it was the inaugural year for this. There was a parade led by the Cat in the Hat and Sue Abrahamson from the library came and read stories. And the children were, and Ms. Alinsky sent me a photo of the winners in each of the classes. And they were spectacular and wonderful. So I hope, if I don't get invited to be a judge, I can go and watch. It really seemed like it was a wonderful event.
That was a good thing. And I had a root canal.
Oh, dear.
I was really sorry to pass that one out.
Yeah.
The alternative was not good.
No, for me either at this point. But anyway, I appreciated the invitation. It sounded terrific.
After the last month of Personnel Committee meetings, will you, I have to ask, how many pages of questions did you draft for them?
Do you know, I decided I'd wing it.
No, no, Sandy.
That I had to remember, these were children. I mean, little children.
Yeah.
Don't want to make them cry. Anyway.
Did she find someone at the last minute?
She did. Um, it's, uh, Dr. Carmen Sandel.
Oh.
Was there. She's a, a 4K director at Time and Treasures, but it was the first day, so she happened to be sobbing, so it all...
Oh, that was perfect. Good. Well, I appreciated the offer.
Anybody, anybody else? Okay. Administrator?
City Care Agreement with Athletic Trainer. We have a three-year agreement from City Care. Um, really no changes to that. No significant changes. We'll just continue on as it has been.
The only thing they're going to be doing is place some, um, billboards up at the different entrances of our, our, like, Johnson. One in the gym, just in the key that they're providing service.
Kind of advertising.
For the high school. It's an advert, advertisement billboard.
And the trainer is a Wapaka grad?
Yeah.
Cassie Glodowski?
Oh.
Yeah. Very exciting. She was very excited to get that.
Good. They're not easy to come by.
She's been holding, waiting out for that, I think, yeah, for quite a while.
Good for her. So we'll need a motion to approve that three-year agreement.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I included a letter. It's a response to the WSB Wellness Program presentation that, uh, Mr. Hayek did down in the Dells at the WSB, uh, conference. And M3 was part of that presentation as well. But they sent a letter to me and I shared it with you on the, in the board packet, uh, complimenting Mr. Hayek for the excellent job he did representing the school district of Wapaka. So for that, thank you, Carl. Thank you, Carl. Before we get to the consent agenda, I would like to point out, we have, um, a lot of experienced teachers walking out the door of retirement this year. Um, Bobby Miles, Patsy Hunter, Julie DeWalt, Tim Cole, Greg Warren, Roger Larson, John Kronkowitz and Joan Holman all retiring this year. Lots of years, uh, among that group of people. So congratulations to them and thank you to them for their service to the district and mission well in the future.
In effecting that appreciation, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call about Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
Kristen Greenfield?
Yes.
Steven Johnson?
Yes.
Steven Shamble? Yes.
Is that our only job share now that we have?
It is the only one remaining, yes.
And I know Niece has been doing it a long time. Is that who she's been sharing with for a long time?
That's relatively new.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, yes, that was last, this current year was the first year of that one.
Okay.
But she, I think she was job share for a long time, then stopped and then started again when Cory Hansen came on board. How many people are we looking for for the fall?
We're in the midst of.
Excuse me?
Reorganizing.
What we are, what we're looking for, we're in the midst of reorganizing and a lot of positions throughout the district that were, you know, the number of teachers we hire at the elementary has to do with the class sizes, particularly when we're in the sage classrooms of 18 to 1 ratio. So as those, we have small and large classes, as they move through, we need to shift class, grade room assignments from one teacher to another, but we're working on that along with high school as well. But we will get those things out as soon as we can, I believe, and then we'll start with that. But we're trying to do the internal stuff first so that we know exactly what positions we're looking for externally.
Is there only one chain, Julie DeWalt?
Well, that's the only chain one on here, but there are some, there's some other shifting going on, some positions from Learning Center, but it all depends on the board's decision on third and fourth grade as well. So we're going to hold on final decisions until we know what that's going to look like.
Okay.
Adjourned? Adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.